So there's no public meeting today, right, Charles?
What do you mean?
Is this a public meeting or a private meeting?
This is a public meeting.
Public meeting, okay, I'm sorry.
I think we're all here, Mr. Cobb.
Okay. Okay. Let's get started then. Hold on one second. Nancy, you ready?
Whenever you are.
Okay, our call is council meeting of September 15th, 2020 to order at 7:34 PM. Will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the city clerk please read the Open Publics Meeting Act?
This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Notice of this meeting was included in a notice sent to the record and the Star Ledger and advertised in said newspapers on January 17th, 2020, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has remained continuously posted as the required notices under this statute. A copy of this notice is and has been available to the public in his own file in the office of the municipal clerk. Please take notice, please also take notice that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6 at seek, and in consideration of Executive Order Number 103 issued by Governor Murphy on March 9th, 2020, declaring a state of emergency and a public health emergency in the state of New Jersey, the City of Englewood does hereby notify the public that to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens while ensuring the continued functioning of government, the city council meeting scheduled for September 15th, 2020, at the Englewood Municipal Court, 73 South Van Bron Street, Englewood, New Jersey, 07631, will be held virtually and telephonically via Zoom only. Members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting may do so by calling or clicking on the link, which is on our website, or by calling 929-205-6099, followed by meeting ID 895-9103-5153, passcode 531005 at 7:30 PM. Individuals calling into this number will be able to fully participate in the meeting, including providing public comment. A non-public separate Zoom meeting will be used if closed session is required. Proper notice have been given, the municipal clerk is directed to include the statement in the minutes of this meeting.
Will the city clerk please do the roll call?
Councilman Cohen? Councilwoman Glenn?
Here.
Councilman Hamer?
Here.
Council President Cobb?
Yeah.
Also present is Mayor Michael Wildes, City Attorney Bill Bailey, and Greg Farinback for interim city manager. Absent with prior notice is Councilwoman Cheryl Rosenberg.
Okay, the next order of business will be a motion to approve minutes of the previous meetings. I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution 187, regular meetings July 28, 2020, and special meetings July 6, 2020, and July 23, 2020. So I need a motion to approve in a second.
So moved.
A second.
Nancy, you ready for the roll call?
Councilman Cohen? Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
Oh, yes. I declare the motion carried and the minutes duly approved. Next up is bills and claims. I ask for a motion and a second to resolutions 188 in the amount of $746,978.09. I need a motion and a second.
The move.
Second.
Catherine, a second. Any questions?
I've got one on page 1 of 5, Mr. Kaufman. Would you let me know who, Pruezy and Legal Bill, Pruezy McDermott, Mastro, or Mastro and somebody else?
It's for police matters?
Okay. I see one of two on that page. What? Is there an additional bill expected, or is this the end of it?
If it's, there's probably going to be another one as it's ongoing legal matters, so.
All right, thank you.
I have one. Does anybody else have any questions before I get started? I have one. I have one on page 4 of 5, 2019 Road Program, 31,179, 20. Mr. Volsey, if you'd be surprised to let me know or let us know what project that is?
That is the 2019 Road Program. That is, we finalized that project, et cetera, so TNM is just billing out their portion of it that was never billed out. That's essentially what that is. And that goes under the old contract where you should get a percentage of what the project was. They never build out the rest of the project, and that's what they're doing now, they're just clearing out.
So is this the final billing for 2019, you're saying?
This is the final, this should be the final billing for the 2019 Road Program.
Okay, okay, fine. Anybody else have any questions? Or we can go to the roll call. Nancy, seeing that there's no more questions, can we, can we do the roll call, please?
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
Yes, I declare a motion carried and the bills and claims duly approved. Next, we have presentations, presentations from, we have a presentation from the Financial Advisory Committee regarding management policies based on standard and poor criteria. I believe Mr. Finkel, Mark Finkel, will be speaking to us tonight on that.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilman Cobb, and thank you for putting this matter on the agenda. So for the benefit of the public who may not know, actually, if I'm seeing the entire, I'm not sure if, who I'm seeing here is everyone who's in attendance, but I assume there's some public members who I don't see. So for their benefit, the Englewood Financial Advisory Committee was created by the city council, reports to the city council, the representatives from each of the four wards, as well as a member at large, were all financial people with deep background in finance, were all longtime Englewood residents with deep commitments to Englewood. We've spent considerable amount of time over the last three years trying to understand the city's finances and trying to help the city council with managing the finances of the city. So first, I want to thank each and every one of the council members for, and the CFO and the acting city manager for a great job on this year's budget process. There were some good principles followed, such as that the amount of new debt was less than the debt reduction. Published a five-year plan for the first time, and you got the whole thing done in record time, which was good for the city in many, many ways. So we've tendered to the city clerk a set of financial policies and goals, and tonight we're asking the council to direct the city attorney to use those policies and goals as a text of a proposed resolution that we'd like to see formally proposed at the October meeting. Standard and Poor's has requested this sort of policy in numerous documents and numerous meetings. We believe the policies will be good for the city, good for the rating agencies, good with recruiting the next city manager, and will give transparency to the city finances for all stakeholders, especially the citizens. Additionally, we believe that the negative effect of COVID will be felt by state and local governments for years to come, which gives more focus on the need for proper financial management. Under the proposed guidelines, the city, the council retains the right to craft a budget as it sees fit. The guidelines are just rules for good financial processes, and the specific goals in the policies are really taken straight from Standard and Poor's. As a reminder, Englewood has twice the per capita debt as TNEC and twice the amount of annual debt service, and these are paid directly by taxpayers, so we need to address the city's finances with seriousness of purpose. So I can either go through the language if you want to share a screen, or I can go over the general guidelines, however you all wish. Do you want to take a second to thank my fellow committee members, Jackie Weisner and Kevin Stewart, Bob Colehagen and Adam Brown for putting in a lot of work on this? So, Councilman Cobb, I would like to proceed.
Hold on, Nancy, are we able to share the screen or we're not? We're not?
I'm at.
I'm trying to get her attention.
I'm sorry, my cat's playing with it.
Okay. Are we able to do that, or?
No, I'm sorry.
So, so Mark, maybe we could get Michael Kaufman also to come off mute, and we could have a conversation, and you could talk about some of the elements of it, and so that gives a picture of how we have to respond to S and P when they do these examinations and what their expectations are, so we give, you know, high level, we could go high level and, and see with Mr. Kaufman if he has an opinion on these things as well, because I know he's on.
Your thought, I just, I just saw it like very recently, I didn't really have a chance to review it, so tonight I'm not going to have any comments on it. I just, it was just emailed to me, you know, a couple hours ago, and I didn't get a chance to really look at it.
Sure, just in general, Michael, it's, they're, they're fairly high-level sort of best practices for, for assumption, revenue and expense assumptions for, for regular updating of budgets versus actuals, for long-term planning, which we've already, you've already done a great job this year, but extending it to, to capital planning, and just generally giving goals for liquidity and, and debt service. So it's, it's, it's fairly high level, but they do follow the Standard and Poor's guidelines, and if we could, you know, the goal is to get to the city to a AAA rating, which could save 50 basis points, which would be hundreds of thousands of dollars that taxpayers would save. So, you know, if you want to go over these, you know, offline after the meeting, as the city attorney is preparing the actual resolution, I'm happy to spend time with you on that.
Nancy, were you saying something?
I was just going to remind the council that it was also emailed to them if they'd like to look that up in their email.
Right, thank you, thank you, that's cool. So why don't we do this? Mark, you and, and Michael can get together offline on this thing. We will, we can have a conversation with Mr. Bailey to craft something. We're at our next workshop, we can have this on the docket to go through and come up with some kind of decision at the next workshop. I, my personal opinion is that the best thing is the discipline and the framework needs to be put in and complying with the S and P, because you're right, we want to get to AAA if that's obtainable, and so we have to put the discipline in. So I think that it would be advantageous that you and, and Mr. Kaufman and whoever else needs to be there, whether it be Ms. Chen or whether Thompson Chen or whether it be Mr. Farinback, you guys collectively could get together and make sure we have something, and then I'll talk to Mr. Bailey, and we'll, we'll get something for the workshop meeting.
Appreciate it. Any, any other questions or comments from any of the other?
Well, that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it to the other council members and whatever questions they may have for you, they, the floor is up to them, open to them, excuse me. Ms. Glenn, Mr. Hamer, Mr. Kaufman, I mean, Mr. Cohen? Nobody has a question?
I have the first read.
I asked her to look at it. Who was that?
It was just background noise, but, but I do have a question. Mr. Finkel, would you sort of talk to us a little bit about debt and debt management? You did allude to our, our debt per capita being higher, you know, twice as high as that of TNEC, and debt service accordingly is the same. Of course, our debt number is higher than it ought to be, but are we within, you know, whatever debt ratio we're, you know, we're supposed to be or allowed to be, not supposed to be, but allowed to be?
Right, we're, we're a little high on some and a little lower on others, and I think directionally, the city's done a good job recently of starting to, to address that. I think it's then a question of the taking on of new debt and doing it responsibly in a way that keeps within the guidelines.
All right, great, I, I like the idea of discipline, so, so putting that into our structure, you know, makes it a whole lot, you know, a whole lot better and certainly more achievable, but thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Cobb, may I make your comment? I understand the policies that are being suggested, and I've actually implemented many of those in some other jurisdictions with whom I've worked. I think Englewood has some particular characteristics that need to be addressed when you're going through the budget process for 2021 and looking at your capital program for the upcoming six years. You have, and I think Mr. Volsey will support me in this, an enormous amount of infrastructure that is deteriorating and needs to be dealt with, and the longer it is ignored and the longer it does not receive the appropriate financial resources, the worse the infrastructure for the municipality is going to be. And so when you're going through this process of determining what is the delicate balance that is going to exist between financial resources going toward capital programs and the impact on future debt service, you really cannot just focus on the fiscal side of it, you have to focus on the status of the current infrastructure. And I just want to make sure that all four of you who are present this evening have a sensitivity to that. I think the S and P policies that Mr. Finkel has raised are well thought out and are well laid out by S and P in previous documents they've issued and in the current ones. But I do think you have to find that delicate balance, because you do have an ever-increasing deterioration in your infrastructure, and the actions that were taken this year to postpone some of the costs until 2021, you cannot keep on kicking that can down the road, or your successors are going to be paying for it dearly. That's all.
Yep.
If I can just, if I can just address one thing about that, so I think these policies absolutely reinforce what, I agree with everything you say, and these policies do call for a five-year rolling capital plan, which I think would address exactly that issue, so that you're not, you're not doing that reactive thing. And I worked in New York City for the Emergency Financial Control Board, and I had a boss who used to say there are two kinds of deferred capital items. One is like a, you know, a basketball court that you haven't painted, you just have to paint it in two years, but the other, the other deferred maintenance is a lawn, if you don't, if you don't maintain that for five years, then you have hell to pay for that. So, so we need to be, you know, conscious of where we're deferring revenue, and we're making it much, much worse, and address that early. And as I said in the five-year plan, I think it's, it's a responsible way to do it.
So I, I think this is a good discussion, I think the folks that need to get together, get together, and they have that kind of discussion, and as we go down the road, you know, these things will all be considered. But this, the fact that we're having this discussion in September, and we recognize that this, these are some good things to implement, is a positive thing. So hopefully, we, we don't have to kick the can, we have to address the, because if one thing is kicking the can down the road, there's another thing, we have to, we are forced to address these things and not prepared to address them. So I think this conversation is, is, is a good one to start, so we all know what the commitment has to be.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes.
I, I want to commend the council for putting this on the agenda in September of 2020 for 2021 budget. This is the earliest that I've seen this kind of conversation, and I'm very happy now that Franz Volsey, based on what Greg's comments are, is now officially a city engineer, and it would be wise, because of Greg's comment, to kind of get a snapshot of those burgeoning infrastructure needs that we have, so that Mark Finkel and the crew, and I want to thank Mark and Adam and Bob and so forth for your stellar leadership and Ms. Weisner, because it's so important that we meet that balance that Greg said. So many residents are complaining, so many roads are deteriorating, and weather we see is only getting more dramatic, and we have to cut that balance. And borrowing money is principally something that cities get, get used to doing, but paying down debt, I think, is the more fashionable fiscal balance, as Greg said. So I, I'd like to see some interplay, Charles, if you don't mind, with the city engineer and these priorities being infused at the same time, more to Greg's point, so that when we are going to choose the capital projects, are they the highest priority, and Franz has that intelligence as to what's important.
Franz has always had the opportunity to, we always prioritize, right, Mr. Volsey, the, the projects? We've always done it that way, he's, he's, he's provided us what, what's the priority, and that will always continue as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, he drives that bus and tells us what, what's there, and we collectively as a group make, make these decisions with him, not without him. He's always in the room with us, and he tells us what's important, so I think that this is, this will work hand in glove with everybody, so I think this is a good start.
And I'm more than happy to meet with anyone regarding these matters, so whether it be with Michael or Mark, just let me know when the meetings are, and I'll make myself available.
Okay, that's fair, yes, somebody said?
Council President?
Yes.
Mr. Volsey and I were talking about this at the end of last week, and he's putting together a schedule of those projects that still have yet to be tackled for 2019 and what we're currently working on for 2020. So that schedule, you know, can come before the council and the residents, so that everyone's more aware of what's being tackled and, and the schedule we have for getting it done.
Yeah, that sounds like a good, that sounds like something good that we know, so at least we know what's out there and what's being done, and then we can plan, that allow us to plan in the future as well, to Greg's point, so that we know what's being tackled and what needs to be tackled, so. Sounds, sounds good to me, so what we'll do is, Mark, you and Mr. Kaufman will, will take the first leg of this thing, see what's happening, then when you come back to us, then, you know, we will, I'll make sure I have this on the agenda for the workshop, and then we will tackle that piece, but, but also in conjunction, we will know what Mr. Volsey is talking about, what's priority going forward in his mind, and what's open right now, what we're on, and what's we're looking for for 21, and then we'll, we'll go from there, so it's an easier conversation to adopt, you know, one part of it, the resolution is one part of it, but we also need to know where we're going as well, so we can do all those things at the workshop. So, sounds like we got some work to do, but this is good work.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Finkel, I think, I think we're done, if nobody else has any questions for Mr. Finkel.
Thank you.
And, okay, thank you, Mr. Finkel. Nancy, the next presentation is up is Jim, Jim Fedurko, on COVID-19, I believe it is? Is he on, is Jim on?
I need to find him. There he is. A lot of people on. Where did he go? I've got him. There we go, he raised his hand. Okay.
Oh, I see.
Okay. Hello, everybody, thank you for inviting me tonight. 19 presentation. You have two, two visual aids that were sent to you by Nancy?
Sorry, I couldn't figure out how to do the share screen with, with this.
Okay, but the council members have that, that graph?
They emailed it to them, yes.
Okay, so the first graph, if you don't have it in front of you, I'll explain it. It's the number of new cases in, that occurred in Englewood since the beginning in March, and in the beginning, it's a very steep curve. We were getting over 20.
One second, maybe you would like to, between you and Nancy, give a little history how we started in March with the meetings and how you started reporting to the group? That gives a little background as well, you know?
All right, so from the, from the very beginning, from our very first case, we worked closely with the council president and the mayor and council, and we also worked closely with the Englewood Board of Health, which is comprised of citizens of the, of Englewood, and we met regularly, and then we scaled that back to just Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and now we just meet Wednesdays as the number of cases decreases, and that's what that graph indicates. So I, I think the council, they also were helpful, we needed contact tracers, we needed money to hire nurses, and they helped us, they, they allowed me to hire those nurses, and since then, we've been reimbursed, it's roughly $25,000, and we received a check not long ago, about two weeks ago, we received reimbursement for that, so thank you for allowing me to get the money and spend it and hire some really good folks to help with the COVID-19 situation. So thank you, Councilman Cobb and Mayor Wildes for that. Okay, so getting back to the graph, if you see it, we've flattened the curve ever since about mid to late May. Right now, we average about one new case per day, and that's been how it's going for the last few months, about one new case per day. If you also look at that graph, we haven't had a fatality since June 14th. So you look, the case fatality rate is also decreasing, because as new people become infected and then no new deaths, that decreases the case fatality rate, so those are all, that's all good news. I, I wanted to tell the council about, well, who are some of these latest cases? So I'll just give you an idea, like who, who recently tested positive for COVID-19? So our last couple cases, we had two college-age students who tested positive, one of them is an out-of-state student, so they don't even live here, but their parents, they used their parents' address, so that's how they came onto our rolls as a positive for Englewood. We have an 85-year-old who is asymptomatic and then recently tested negative for COVID-19, so that's another case. Then we have a 20, 20-year-old-ish person who tested positive, they gave a bogus telephone number, and then we went to the, the house, the door, they wouldn't answer the phone, so that's another case that we have. And then lastly, we have a family, the husband tested positive, and then the, the wife tested positive, and the daughter is not feeling well, but never went for testing, I'm assuming because she's not that sick to go get a taste. So why do I bring that up? I bring that up to say, you know, this disease is in our community, and it's at different levels of our community as well. And so those are examples of the most recent cases here in Englewood. And then the next piece that I wanted to show you is, is from the New Jersey Department of Health. It's a very good tool to, to gauge on what is the transmission rate of COVID-19 in our county and also in our state, and it breaks it down by county. So I don't know if you could pull that one up, if you're looking at it, it's a very colorful one, this is put out. This is put out every Thursday by the by the New Jersey Department of Health. So if you look at that, uh, you have like the northern section and the lower section of New Jersey as green, being low transmission. And then the middle part of the state uh is yellow, which is a little bit a moderate transmission rate. I'm I'm saying this so that people who don't see could could kind of get a visual of it. Um, and then it goes specifically to numbers. And we are in the the northeast and those the northeast section is Bergen, Husick, Hudson and Essex County. So the most populated, some of the most populated counties. And you see that our case rate is two point three seven. So what does that two point three seven mean? It means that for every hundred thousand people, two point three seven uh percent become infected. So Bergen County is roughly a million folks. So we're looking at tw- we get twenty new twenty three new cases per day. In the county of Bergen, which is in the green. That's a good number. Uh, the next is a percent CLI, which is one point five two percent. And this is people who are going into the hospital for COVID like illnesses. C L L, C L I stands for COVID like illness. So of a hundred people that go into the emergency room, about one point five percent have COVID like illnesses. And I don't particularly like that one because it's subjective. It's COVID like illness. It's not a hard fact. But the next one I look, I'm at the I'm looking through the chart, then you have the percent po- uh positivity, which is one point five two. What does that mean? It means for every hundred people that are tested for COVID nineteen, one point five two percent test positive. So roughly like uh ninety eight people who go in for a COVID test are negative. And then one point about two percent are positive when they go get it get tested. So these are all good numbers. And then they come up with that Kelly store, Kelly score, COVID activity level. And you see that for Bergen County, uh, we are in the green and it's been that way since since. Uh, the whole month of August, probably even before then. So we have a very good uh uh a very low transmission uh rate of COVID nineteen within our county. And uh that's all good news. So uh that's that's a good that that's uh. One is a good tool to gauge how our county is going. And that's thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, any questions?
Yep, Jim, I have a question. As we approach the fall and the winter, when we'll have to be inside. Are we are you gearing up you and your team to provide guidance and how we should be uh conducting ourselves? As the as we will be more in enclosed areas? I mean, because, you know.
I agree. I I know where you're going. Yep. Uh, absolutely. That's a that's a concern. Uh, as as winter time comes, uh, we're gonna be huddled together and we may see an increase in the COVID nineteen cases. Uh, that's definitely could happen. Uh, the way that Inglewood Health Department is geared up is we've been given uh contact tracers from the state. And I think we're prepared to handle a surge. Um, I hope that it's not a surge like we've had in the beginning, but uh that's that's where we stand right now. The state did a fine job of training contact trace. Uh, and then how else are we preparing? We're we're gearing up our flu shot clinics. We have a couple uh two flu shot clinics next week. Uh, we're working at one eleven West, I believe, on September twenty eighth. We're doing a flu shot clinic with Buckley's there. Um, we're just kind of the person that Buckley's is going to be giving the the flu shot. And we're just kept marrying the two agencies together and doing some health education. I believe Catherine might be going there to do some census work as well. So uh we're also planning to do another event with the Inglewood Hospital. Uh, they've given us five thousand dollars to buy more flu shot. Uh, and I'm my plan is to uh we're gonna do something at North Hudson. North Hudson is the frequent uh FQHC. So we're we're doing a flu shots. We're also working with the school district to get their teachers vaccinated for the flu. Because that's gonna be real confusing. If you have the flu, you have the flu or do you have the uh COVID? So that's our plan, I think, and and we're getting a lot of support from the media promoting getting your flu shot. So um, that's where we're going right now, Councilman Cobb.
Okay, uh, my my final question is um. Have you been in contact with the school as they go back to to track to check on our young folks? To make sure that they understand that you're a resource that's being provided by the city?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, Ketsia Sa- Dr. Ketsia Sadler is a a board member. She's past board president. I work closely with her and um so she's our primary point of contact and I we have a good relationship with the nurses. And those are the people, the school nurses are the ones who have their um. That they're where the rubber meets the road as far as the school goes and and they really know what's happening within the schools. So that's who I work with primarily and who I've been in contact with.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody have any questions for Jim?
Just a just a a quick uh comment if I can. Um, Jim, you're you're extraordinary and we've been lucky all these months. Not just to have a health department, but to have a director of your caliber, both academically and personally. Um, I I'm getting a lot of uh residents reaching out because of allergies and they go into panic, much like the flu. That they're getting headaches and allergies and all kinds of aches and sometimes fever. So it leads a little bit into the hysteria going into the season. Uh, but maybe you want to share a word about some of the efforts that you've made this summer on the restaurant enforcement? Because there were a lot of residents running around with cameras and taking photos of people not wearing masks. And the sense of propriety that you have on weekends, particularly in our central business district. Why don't you share a little bit of the efforts that you're taking with Priscilla and everything?
Uh, so we have a a good uh. Health department team who uh was able to respond to some of these complaints. And for the most part, the restaurants, the restaurants were in good shape. I I was impressed that uh they they were maintaining the social distancing, wearing masks. Uh, we had a few complaints and we we handled those appropriately. So um I think uh what worked well, I know that uh I've got some complaints from the council and the mayor. And uh we addressed those I and I think things things are doing going well.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Jim?
I had a question. Um, Jim, what's the window for flu shots? Um, that people should uh follow for maximum uh protection via the flu shot?
Uh, September and October timeframe is ideal. Um, it's interesting because our nurse clod at Murdoch, she believes getting it uh more in the later part. And I am more in favor of getting it earlier. So uh the 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 rule of thumb, though, is September and October. However, we do give the flu shot up into uh November. I prefer earlier.
Okay, and do we do anything with the pneumonia shot?
Uh, we do have that shot available at the Inglewood Health Department. Uh, also for the flu shot clinic, it will be available. So those who are age fifty five and older could get the pneumovax, a flu shot.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Jim, please? Jim, thank you for your update. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
No problem. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right, next. Ordinances for public hearing and second reading. Ordinance twenty dash zero four. Consideration now will be given to that ordinance. Will the city clerk please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance, an ordinance amending ordinance number nineteen dash zero seven fixing the maximum annual salaries. To be paid to officers and employees in the unclassified service of the city of Inglewood as of January one, twenty twenty.
I I declare that the public hearing on this ordinance is now open. If there's anyone who desires to be heard or to ask a question concerning this ordinance, he or she will be heard at this time. Please come forward. And raise your hand and give your name and your address for the record. Um, also, Miss Mr. Kaufman, I believe. Uh, Mr. Kaufman, could you give some background on this as well?
Sure. Um, this, the salary ordinance reflects what we adopted in the budget when we went through the budget cycle this year. Uh, that's it just reflects and it's a maximum of what we're able, what that unclassified position is able to earn. It but it 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 was already, it was discussed when we did the budget and it's just. Putting in an ordinance as council president Cobb requested that it be every year.
Nancy.
Um, there's a so just a reminder to the members of the public. Enter to be called upon at the bottom of your screen, just click on more. There is a raise hand function. Uh, once your hand is raised, we will um. Uh, unmute you and and allow you to talk. Right now, uh, Rick?
Yeah, can you please tell me what departments does that ordinance specifically affect? Who are those unclassified employees? It's not really clear. Hello?
Mr. Kaufman?
I'd like to get a response.
It's. It's all depart- all department heads and any and any position that classifies as unclassified.
All right, I'm asking you uh specifically what what those, who are those department heads?
City manager, city manager, assistant city manager, director of human resources, uh, city clerk, deputy city clerk, uh. CFO, treasurer, tax assessor, tax collector, the uh any clerk, payroll analyst. The city engineer, public works director, uh, police chief, deputy police chief. Library director, fire chief, deputy fire chief. Uh, fire inspector, director of recreation, uh, program director, judge. Uh, municipal court administrator, deputy court administrator, uh, executive assistants. That are privy to personal information and uh. Administrative clerks, confidential secretaries, clerk typist. Those, that's basically the uh positions that are under the uh unclassified salary order.
All right, and I have another uh statement to add to that question. Was this ordinance crafted to uh specifically? Uh, you know, to a specifically affect a particular person or a particular department? Because from my experience, Inglewood, when they craft these ordinances, they always have ulterior motives. And uh, you know, they have certain people that they want to send a message to. So rather than, you know. Uh, just go out there and point the finger, they hide behind these ordinances and then they're able to discriminate and uh play the game. And cause the city even more lawsuits and uh the taxpayers are the ones that ultimately pay the expense. Uh, would you know that if this was crafted to uh specifically target one particular person or one particular department?
Mr. Cobb, would you like me to respond and give it? Okay, so the salary ordinance pretty much sets the maximum salary ranges for all the positions that Mr. Kaufman just went through. Um, during the budget process, uh. Uh, I I guess uh a cost of living increase is given to all these um employees. It's usually one point seven five percent. Um. With those, with that increase, sometimes you hit the ceiling of the max rate. So we have to uh by law, make sure that all those salaries are below the max rate. Uh, so that's why every year after the budget is adopted, this salary ordinance is done. It's it's an annual increase. Um, I believe that's that's. Pretty much the best explanation I can give. Greg, do you have anything else that you think can help explain that?
I think what you were trying to say was that it's an across the board increase in an amount that the city council has authorized. And the only cases in which it would not be that across the board amount would be in the event. It hit the maximum of the range. Am I correct?
I believe so. And I think also just one one further clarification. Uh, unclassifieds are those not in unions. So if you're classified, you're pretty much in a union. Um, so those are your unclassified employees, those who are not union employees. So if everyone's wondering why no one, no other um employees or departments were mentioned in that.
Yeah, well, you know, like I said, from my personal experience, anytime the city has a personal vendetta. Against people, they craft these discriminatory ordinances. I mean, case in point, when we get a thief and a criminal like Ed Hines, we bring him in here and we overcompensate somebody that's completely worthless. And then somebody that's worth the money, you don't give them the money because they're not willing to play the game. So I mean, you pretty much answered my question, but uh I'll just dig further into it. But I know a lot of these ordinances are crafted because of the uh personal vendettas that people wage at taxpayers' expense in the city.
I would say I was not personally involved in uh writing this ordinance. But I know that Ms. Chen, as she was working on it with uh Mr. Kaufman. My understanding is is that it is across the board, equal to everybody that is affected by it. And there is no segregation of any particular individual for any particular reason.
Well, isn't there a particular employee that's getting an additional fifteen thousand dollars on top of everything else for cost of living expenses? Uh, Mr. Kaufman, can you tell me who that employee is?
No, I'm not aware of any.
No, I'm talking, Mr. Kaufman.
The these were discussed during the bu- budget process when the uh city manager gave her uh recommendations for increases for certain people and. Not for other people.
Okay, so Dari is not getting uh an additional fifteen thousand dollars for uh, you know, doing what she's told to do. I can't hear anybody.
The 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 this was discussed during the budget process.
Okay, well, you don't have short term memory. I don't remember that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cobb, there are two other people um on as well.
Next. Who's next?
Uh, next is Mr. Manat.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you guys for having me. Um, since I just wanted to know, we you spoke about the max. Do you, can you tell us now, like, what departments are close to that max? Because you should have, I'm assuming you would have that information.
Mr. Kaufman?
Well, well, everyone is close to the max. It's that's why I raise it every year to bring them close to the max. So the only the the only salaries that are not necessarily is every employee close to the max is is like the other, like the executive assistants. That could be, someone could be there for one year, someone could be there for ten years. So someone could be close to the max and someone could be, you know, twenty thousand le- less than the max or. Just an an example, doesn't necessarily mean those are close to the max. They the the department heads and the the ones that are specific to specific people, they may close to the max within five thousand dollars.
Okay, because I'm just I'm just thinking, if they're so close to the max, why are we, why are we sitting here, keep fattening their pockets? I I I don't understand that. If you're close to the max, that means you're getting pretty much, pretty much most of the money that you can make it in that position. So like, why are we even focused on those ordinance to to keep fattening up the their pockets when they're already so close to the max? Well, we we need to allocate some of this other money into other things that are a little bit more important and just keep paying these high, very highly paid officials in our city.
Mr. Cobb, may I comment?
Yes.
Three quarters, maybe ninety percent of the employees in the city have been unionized. The unions negotiate under rules set down by the state of New Jersey. Some of those unions have binding interest arbitration, which means in the end, the city may not even make the decision as to what the salary increase will be. The positions that are generally affected by this ordinance are the people who are not unionized. This cost of living increase of approximately one point seven five percent. Is solely to try to keep up with the amount that unions are receiving. Otherwise, you will have circumstances where the people who are in charge of the department are making less. With greater responsibilities than. are making less with greater responsibilities than the people that are working for them in those departments.
Very good explanation, very good explanation. And that needs to be something that, that, that shouldn't be the case. I would hope the head of the departments are making more money than the people underneath them. So that was a good explanation. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. Yeah, so you say we got one more person?
Um, now you have two more people. Scott Jenkins? How are you two talking? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, how's everybody? First of all, I had a couple of comments. The first thing is that in looking at this ordinance and looking at the last few raises that were given out in the human resources, I'd just like to ask the council president, since we don't have a city manager technically, how is it that we have a part-time city manager? Okay, that works 20 hours a week, basically from her home? I don't even know if she comes to City Hall. She does most of the work from Zoom. How is it that we are able to decide that these high-level employees like Daria Trumpet and so on are meeting any kind of goals and expectations that would merit these type of increases? And I'm not talking about an across-the-board increase. I'm talking about a 15 or $20,000 raise that she received within the last year and a half. So could you please explain to me how it is that that person can make those determinations based on the lack of, she doesn't even function in the building to see this woman work? How is this happening under your watch, Mr. Cobb?
First of all, we haven't given anybody a raise in 2021. The budget has not been done. And in 2020, I wasn't the council president. That's number one. And number two, at that time in 2020, when we did the 2020 budget, Ms. Chen was in the building every day before COVID. So she, she made those decisions and I, along with other council members, reviewed those decisions based on whatever she put in front of us. So I, I had no control in terms of other than one vote. And I was not, again, the, the, the council president at the time. And that was a part of a budget. And, and I don't know if, I don't even remember if the number was 15,000, whatever the number was, Mr. Jenkins. But Ms. Chen was in the building every day that she worked or was, was contracted to work. And, and Mr. Kaufman would have to go back and, and see what it was because they made those decisions and we voted on the budget in totality, all the, all the council members.
Well, most of the people within, in City Hall, in, in the higher authority of City Hall, received raises together at that particular time. I can tell you that Daria, okay, was at the top of that list. And I'm telling you, Mr. Cobb, she is an employee, okay, who is responsible for much of the failures of what's going on within each department of your city. Okay, you can sit there and think that there's no failures, but I can, I can name the failures for you. So it is just outrageous, okay, to think that, again, okay, you're even considering any kind of raise at this juncture.
Well, I, I, this, this, this ordinance allows you, the, the, the gravity to move on it, doesn't say that somebody's going to get a raise. That's a cost of living allocation. It's not a raise. 1.75 is a cost of living allocation. That has nothing to do with a raise, a performance raise.
Okay, so you, listen, you can call it whatever you want to call it. You can call it a merit increase, you can call it a bonus, it's still extra money, Mr. Cobb, and it comes out of the taxpayers' money, out of their, their budget. So No, no, hold on a second. First of all, I'm talking to you, okay? I, I don't, I'll I, I asked you a specific question, I didn't answer what. Okay, so I, all I'm saying to you is, okay, I really think that your employees need realistic goals and they need to meet certain standards before you just arbitrarily give them things, okay, based on the opinion of a part-time employee, okay, who barely functions in the city of Inglewood. That's just my opinion. The other thing is, you might want to investigate why she choked Tyree Bommer in the courthouse, and that's another reason why she shouldn't get any money.
When you say who choked who?
Daria Trumpet choked, choked another employee.
Mr. Cobb, Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Bailey?
Not that any of the elected officials have, but we can't talk about personnel matters without certain notices and things like that to the employee, not that you have, but I just
I just made a pub, I just made a public report of, of an assault. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, my comment is more directed to the elected officials so that they don't respond regarding the substance of that or lack thereof.
Thank you for protecting their, their positions.
Thank you.
There's one more person with their hand raised. Diane Jansen? Diane, you have to unmute.
I'm sorry, there was a second unmute, I'm so sorry. Diane Jansen, 589 Ridgeland Terrace. Thank you so much, Wazirmas and Mr. Ferenbach. I, based on this discussion, I'm concerned that in private industry, people are not getting adjustments for salaries, for hitting the ceilings. They're not getting cost of living adjustments and they're not getting merit increases. And if they are, they're lower than what is being proposed. I think as a city, we really need to consider that, especially when it comes to management. Thank you.
Mr. Ferenbach? Greg?
There's nothing to be said. You're dealing with 1.75% and you know that there have been determinations reached previously to give other employees 2% and in some cases, I believe, in excess of that. This is barely treading water. Is it possible to be able to do an across-the-board freeze? No, because there's binding interest arbitration for police and fire. These decisions were made, as I understand it, the latter part of last year, the early part of this year. We are now approximately nine months after those decisions were made. And under those circumstances, maybe you should have made the decision back in January, but it's before you now for this ordinance.
Okay. So, okay, if no one else wishes to be heard, I will now close the public hearing and we'll move on ordinance 20-04 to be adopted. I need a motion and a second. The move.
Excuse me, Councilman Cobb, could, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Could you, or Greg, clarify once again that the ordinance permits the, an increase up to the maximum specified in the ordinance, but it doesn't authorize the employees who hold those positions to receive such an increase?
That's my understanding. Greg could correct me if I'm wrong.
That is my understanding also.
Right, it doesn't authorize anything, Catherine, you're correct.
Right, it's just, it permits it, but it doesn't authorize it.
It does not authorize it. So I think that's, that's what the public needs to hear. It does not authorize anything, it just permits it to happen during the course of our budget process. Yes.
But Mr. Cobb, if I may ask, before the votes cast, it could put in language there, I'm asking the city solicitor, Mr. Bailey, that to the extent that police and fire have binding arbitration, the council could freeze all the other directors for the COVID year. In other words, this gives them the authority to do it if they want to do it. To Catherine's point, they don't have to do it, they may not do it. But principally, if nobody in the private sector is getting raises and you have to, you're bound for police and fire, why not take a bold move and just freeze it here? Is there a compelling reason legally that the council has to adopt this?
Well, two things, the council has to adopt the salary ordinance because you can't compensate people in municipal government more than is authorized by an ordinance. The decision as to what someone gets paid, however, under the city charter is the decision of the city manager, not the governing body. So you cannot restrict that, it would violate the charter.
Mayor, if I may make another comment?
Yes.
During the months of December 2019, January, February, and March of 2020, the private sector was giving out raises that remained in effect for most of, if not all of, the remainder of 2020. What happened here was that the ordinance was held off from being acted upon to determine what was happening with the finances for the city. Mr. Kaufman has been preparing on an ongoing basis, various scenarios based upon revenue collections and the extent to which the budget is close to what was anticipated at the beginning of the year. It has only been brought back at this point to make sure that there would not be any adverse consequences to the budget. Secondly, this council has authorized and therefore will authorize for others salary increases for collective bargaining units where the group of employees you're dealing with here are effectively the employees that the governing body depends on and do not have any of the rights or authorities that exist under collective bargaining in the state of New Jersey. To not authorize this ordinance is essentially to discriminate against those people in your organization upon whom you can count on as opposed to those who are under collective bargaining, who have the ability to be able to invoke either perk or grievances or whatever to be able to demand the increases that they believe they deserve.
Thank you, that's a very thorough answer again, and I appreciate it, Greg. And you consider that the number was held in abeyance then for the first point, just to make sure as COVID took on, based on revenue, that the city could afford to do it?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Point of order, Council President?
Yes, Councilman Hamer.
There was a motion on the floor, been moved and had not been seconded. Normally, according to procedure, the motion was seconded before we have all the discussion and questions, but just wanted to make sure that we kept track of where we were.
Yeah, so we need a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please, Nancy.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
Yes, I declare a motion carried and the ordinance duly adopted and that this ordinance will be published once by title only in the record. Next, ordinance 20-05. Consideration will be given now to that ordinance. Will the city clerk please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 254, Article 2, Section 15 pertaining to hours of operations for laundries and laundrettes.
I declare the public hearing on this ordinance is now open. If anyone who desires to be heard or ask questions concerning this ordinance, he or she will be heard at this time, please raise your hand, give your name and your address for the record.
Remember at the bottom of the screen, the more function, just raise hand. No one's raising their hand?
No one?
No. Oh, there we go, Mr. Manat. Mr. Manat?
Yes, just, I just didn't know what exactly what that, that ordinance was, and I'm sure some other people might not know. Could you break it down for us a little bit, please?
Nancy, do you want me to go through it?
Yeah, so we can understand.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey?
Yes, Council President?
And Mr. Cohen can go after you.
The ordinance on the books for decades is somewhat archaic. It prohibited laundromats from operating on Sundays. This was brought to the attention of the governing body and it was really apparently unintended because we do have laundromats within the city operating on Sundays. So this clarified that to permit them to be open on Sunday. That's the only change.
You got something you want to say?
Well, I was just, you know, pretty much, you know, parrot most of what, what Mr. Bailey said, which is, you know, a short while ago, I recognized that there was a number of ads out for laundromats that were advertising on Sunday. And we were notified that, you know, they theoretically could have gotten fined because there was an ordinance on the books that said they were not allowed to. You know, we realized that, that, as Mr. Bailey said, the ordinance was pre-1978. And, you know, and, you know, when we, when we redid a lot of, a lot of the ordinances of the charter, so probably goes back far beyond that and just didn't have any relevance to us now. But technically, if we did not make this change, then those who are open on Sunday could be fined by our code enforcement departments and for the things they've been doing anyway. So we were more to make sure that we just, in a housekeeping fashion, updated ordinances to reflect the realities in the ground.
And that's all I wanted, clarification, sounds good.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Nancy, anybody else? Huh?
No, no one else.
Okay, if no one else wishes to be heard, I will close the public hearing on this. I need a motion on 20-05 to be adopted and, I mean, a so, and a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
Yes, I declare a motion carried and the ordinance duly adopted and that the ordinance be published once by title only in the record. Next, ordinance 20-06. Will the city clerk please read the ordinance by title?
Mr. Cobb, Mr. Bailey has a comment to make.
Okay, Mr. Bailey?
Council President, this ordinance has to do with the ordinance that was introduced two meetings ago by the city council regarding redevelopment plan in the ERA South area. By statute, it has to be referred to the planning board, which it was. The planning board has 45 days to provide any comments or recommendations back to the council. While the planning board did discuss it, I believe at their last meeting, and I've been corresponding with the board attorney and will be speaking to him tomorrow to address any questions or what have you, it's on the planning board's agenda for September 24th. So really pursuant to the statutory requirements, I would request that this ordinance be carried to our next meeting after, the first meeting after the 24th, because we really need to give the planning board that statutory timeframe.
Okay, so we, we need to table this?
Adjourn the hearing, I believe.
Correct.
Okay.
I believe it's October 13th.
October 13th, yes.
13th. So we have, we have to have a motion to adjourn this?
Yes.
So move. I'll second it. Roll call, Nancy.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Hamer?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
Yes. There are no ordinances for introduction or first reading. And now we're going to the public comment on agenda items only. Items 189 through 198. If anyone from the public wishes to speak about any of these resolutions on the consent agenda, please state your name, address, and raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. And only these, and only these agenda items.
No one's raising their hand. Here we go. Rick? Go ahead.
Yeah, can you go through the consent agendas because I have been able to print this stuff out, so I don't even know what's on the consent agenda, but you know, maybe you elected officials could do us a favor and enlighten us if you don't mind. That's not asking too much. Pretty sure everybody would appreciate it.
Do you like me to read every resolution by title?
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? If you would, I don't mind.
Yes, please, Yance, if you don't mind.
All right, Resolution Number 189 is a resolution honoring Englewood Rotary Club community award recipients. Resolution Number 190 is resolution honoring 2020 Flat Rock Brook Nature Association Online Gala Award recipients. Number 191 is the renewal of the liquor licenses for the 2020-2021 licensing period. 192 is a resolution authorizing the implementation of a mandatory payroll direct deposit for all city employees and elected officials. Resolution Number 193 is a resolution authorizing the appointment of municipal representatives to the Bergen County Community Development Regional Committee. Number 194 is endorsing the submission of a 2020 Bergen County Community Development Block Grant by Women's Information Center, Women's Rights Information Center for heating system replacement. Number 195 is endorsing the submission of a 2020 Bergen County Community Development Block Grant by Bergen Family Center for COVID Prevention Project Ultraviolet Air Filters. Number 196 is refunds due to state tax appeals. Number 197 is refunds due to overpayment of taxes and number 198 is to accept the FEMA assistance for firefighters grant for the purchase of PPE for COVID-19.
Thanks a lot, Yance, I appreciate it. Now, I don't have any more comments on that.
Motion to adopt this resolutions by unanimous consent?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Cobb, we need to remove the liquor license when it needs to be amended.
Okay. So we're gonna table that one?
That would be number.
191?
191, yes. Just to amend it.
Okay. So what do we need to do for that? You want to vote on that one first?
Just remove it for now and amend it or amend it first and keep it in the consent agenda? Bill, what do you recommend?
You can amend it or now and then just keep it on the consent agenda.
In the consent agenda, okay. So the request to amend is, I was optimistic, I was hoping everybody would have their information to us by the meeting. I had sent you a resolution with highlighted items on who we were waiting for information on. So the ones that need to be removed from the liquor license resolution are Four West, Spirits on Grand, and 70 Grand and Grand Liquor and Jelly. Everyone else can remain.
Well, Bill, what do we got to do to amend it?
It hasn't been adopted yet, so really it's just a clarification that what you're voting on is the licenses except for those ones that Yance just mentioned.
Okay, that's fine. So now we could go back and go to unanimous consent?
Correct.
Okay. And I believe we had somebody.
I'll do it over. So move.
Mr. Haymer moved it. Anybody want to second it? I'll second it. Yance? Roll call, please.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Glenn?
Yes.
Councilman Haymer?
Yes.
Council President Cobb?
I vote yes. I declare the motion carried and resolutions have been duly adopted. Next, we have on the items for discussion. Consideration of Black Lives Matter display, building heights and setbacks, renaming of the master plan, and affordable housing. Mr. Haymer, you want to take the first one?
Yes, I do. Well, we started a conversation about a, you know, display inside of Englewood, a fitting tribute to Black Lives Matter. And each of us has received an email asking if we could invite a comment by students. And the comment was, or the request was for high school and middle school students. But we do need to come up with a process for doing that, but it absolutely would be a great idea to, at least I believe it would be a great idea to at least involve high school students to weigh in and, you know, think of how we might best pay tribute to to the Black Lives Matter movement. So that's the framework.
You want to speak to the next one? You want me to speak to that?
You can start.
Okay, the next one is talking about building heights and setbacks. Myself and Councilman Haymer have had the conversation and I've had this conversation with others about the heights of these developments and the setbacks. These buildings, for example, 40 Bennett Road is so high and it sits right on the street and we can't afford to have these buildings to be continued to be built in certain parts of town at these heights. So it distorts the skyline in the town. So, you know, we are looking to reduce the heights and push the setbacks back. So it looks like whatever is being built is in conformity to whatever the neighborhood is and not stick out and make that neighborhood or make that particular building look like an eyesore. So we will be working on that to set some parameters with that. And hopefully we'll get that done at our workshop or have it on the agenda for our workshop. Mr. Haymer, you have anything to add to that?
No, that speaks to it perfectly.
Okay. I think the next one is, the next one is you as well. Yes?
I just wanted to follow up on that point, which I think is, you know, vitally important that we have some control mechanisms in our city that allow for appropriate growth, but not growth that we don't want. Will we have like a planner advise us or is this just off the process or, you know?
We will have, we will, obviously we're going to talk to our city engineer. And we had, we had previously until they did the master, the last master plan, we did have different height restrictions and setback restrictions, which were changed. So at a minimum, we need to start there where we were at prior to that, right? Now we are at 60 feet, you know, which is obviously it's an ISO. So we don't want to do that. We want to go back down because I mean, people, Catherine bought in Englewood for the suburbia of all of Englewood, not one part of Englewood, you know what I mean? So I think it's important and we will get some guidance on that, you know, I'm gonna, hopefully we'll have some guidance at the next meeting. But we will have this conversation with Franz and you can have this independently with Franz as well because he knows what we're trying to seek to do.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Haymer?
Is this with regard to master plan?
Yeah.
So it's been given some thought to it and we've had some conversations, you know, with individuals. If there is no legal reason why we have to keep the name of master plan, Mr. Bailey, like for us to give some strong consideration to changing it to a city comprehensive development plan or something of that order? And, you know, make an affirmative step?
Yeah, if I may, if I can just check the statute and all that stuff to see if that language is actually required or not. There may be other language that is permitted and can be used to replace that and I can report back to you prior to the next meeting.
Even, if I may, even if you need to keep it, you can give it an alias or it can be the city's equivalent of that. I think principally with the Board of Chosen Freeholders changing their name to Commissioners, it could be a governing, you know, coordinating plan or whatever it is. I'd like principally to do that, too.
Understood.
All right, the last bullet is affordable housing. And Mr. Bailey, I put that on there because as I said to you earlier, I wanted to get, I was hearing some or receiving some commentary or questions around that and I wanted you to clear up some things about where the city of Englewood stands on affordable housing, whether it meets it and some of the other things that you've recently been experienced in or participated in.
Sure. The city, as you may recall, actually goes back to actually 2011 initially, was one of the first municipalities in the state to get what's called the judgment of compliance and repose. What that means in regular language is that the city had satisfied its prior round requirements to provide affordable housing throughout the city. You might recall that in that timeframe, COA had all but disappeared. And shortly after that, the State Supreme Court actually has now told the courts that they have to determine what towns have satisfied their needs to provide affordable housing, but also what the prospective need is. So what happened when we got that judgment, the city had what's also called immunity, which gave the city immunity from lawsuits regarding that issue. That immunity under the prior round certification and judgment of compliance and repose expired May 31st, 2019. However, the court recognizing the city's efforts has continued to extend that immunity. And the present posture of that issue is that we actually had a conference with the court about two weeks ago. And the court's special master, which is typically a planner appointed by the court to go and evaluate every municipality throughout the state to see what affordable housing they have provided, what needs they've met, what they haven't met. I, myself and the special master back in July, gave him a tour of Englewood by car because we couldn't actually get out and meet with each other because of COVID. And we had a conference with the judge about two weeks ago and we're waiting for the special master and really an organization called Fair Share Housing Center, which is out of South Jersey, which is a nonprofit group that advocates for affordable housing. Because determining or getting their input as to what they think the city's obligation going forward to provide affordable housing should be. So there's no figure in place. You may have seen the paper, other towns where in fact judges have entered judgments saying, okay, XYZ municipality, you need to build X number of units. That hasn't happened yet in terms of Englewood because we're still waiting for a figure which we then will discuss with the judge and the special master. But in the meantime, the city's immunity has been extended, so the city is protected from lawsuits in that regard. We expect to get the number or proposal from the special master in fair share within the next week or so, by the way, which then will, we will discuss as a body and also with the court.
And Mr. Bailey, I'd like to add that we had started to draft an ordinance and have discussions around the ordinance where we were looking to do a number and the number was preliminarily 15% of new developments, right?
Correct.
So we were all, so the city was already being proactive in this space to address our housing needs. So more to come on that and once Mr. Bailey gets, you know, whatever final decisions are made, then the city will be prepared to act and move forward on this particular topic.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? So I'm going to move to the communications from the mayor and council. Mayor Wiles?
I thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's a little awkward for me to see, to not see the public. Somebody had expressed a preference this way. My preference would be for us to be able to engage with one another. But just the same, thank you for the time to speak. We had several ribbon cutting events in the city and I want to thank people who in the middle of a pandemic are beginning to invest and double down in the city. Brissus Bakery and Restaurant in our Colombian district on West Palisade Avenue. Firehouse Subs, who got kicking right before the pandemic, but is doing handsomely on Palisade Avenue and Natrino Outlet Store, as well as Plant Shed, who did a very interesting partnership. More experiences happening. People who are hurting in Manhattan are opening up stores in the city of Englewood. Working with Carol Rash with the Chamber of Commerce to make sure that we greet them and make it seamless for them. And we also appreciate again the investments that people are making. We had some wonderful events in the last few weeks, just to highlight empower the youth by the Bergen NAACP Agendas Dismas, where backpacks and supplies were sponsored again by the Bergen County chapter of the NAACP and the Garrett Dickerson Family Foundation. We had 100th anniversary of women's suffrage, celebrated at the library with the Rotary Club, Women's Rights Information, Historical Society, the National Council of Jewish Women. And we had the 19th anniversary this past Friday of 9/11. I want to thank Catherine Melendez for putting together a very meaningful experience for us. It's all in the city and my Facebook if you would like to see it. I also want to thank Insworth Minot for organizing over 10 now Black Lives Matter peaceful protests. The most interesting was this past Friday where they brought in a very distinguished speaker who kind of put everything in historical context. There hasn't been a time, a weekend where I haven't learned something and we took a walk again in all parts of the city at different times and different parts of the weekend. I urge everybody to join and watch out for Insworth's posts. Thank you again to the DPW for the trash receptacles on Palisade Avenue and for heating the citizen complaints in the aftermath of this extraordinary storm, for keeping our downtown shining despite a pandemic. To the fire department, we want to thank Congressman Pasquale for the award of funds for the Department of Homeland Security for PPE. That is a personal protective equipment to frame costs. To the library board, I'd like to thank Shalise Trustee, Shalise Harrison Trustee for her service to our community. And happy birthday to over about 1,403 registered voters in the past week. Happy birthday also to some very distinguished residents who are recovering from COVID and best wishes again to all the families that are still suffering over their losses. A word on the census, 65.8% response. Our goal is 80%. We're not near where we were before. We certainly want to get there. Take precautions, please. There are increased car burglaries. I'd like to thank the police department for working with the Houses of Worship at the Jewish Holidays will commence this weekend. And for all the other details, please feel free to join us 11 o'clock in the morning on the Facebook library page and my Facebook page for Coffee with the Mayor where I go into greater detail. And the inquiry has made of me progress in community organizations and so forth. Again, to the city council for the Norris ordinance that was adopted. I signed it yesterday. I'm proud to be part of that as we all get phone calls and we see neighbors and institutions impacting one another. It's very important that we get this done. And finally, a word of gratitude, the World War I monument that was being built in our city, 11 part of the initial figures are being sent off to the foundry. It's slated to be fixed into the park directly across from the White House in 2023. It was during the pandemic of 1918 that World War I was fought and you can just see the sculpture. fought. And you can just see the sculptors actually wearing masks as they put together what is a beautiful narrative. So as we memorialize the challenge, I wish everybody a very peaceful week and I'm available all the time as needed for anything that's important to you. Thank you, Mr. C.
Ms. Glenn.
Yes, good evening. I wanted to just take note of the 9/11 service that was very moving and hard to believe it was 19 years ago. I thought it was nicely done and so thanks to all involved, including the mayor for putting it together. I also wanted to encourage everyone who doesn't understand the voting process to reach out either to the city clerk, to the county clerk, to one of us. If you don't know what the process is, please just call. It seems complicated, but it really isn't. We can provide as much education to you as you need. So please don't hold back. It's so important that we all take that important action, supporting our democracy by voting. Last, I wanted to take note of a recognition that was given to one of our third board residents, Anthony Kuratin. And he, I wanted to read his post. It's pretty short, but I found it so moving as he gives thanks for an appointment he's received on a national organization. So Anthony wrote, "Racial and cultural diversity are hallmarks of our society. In order to celebrate diversity, cultivate harmony and respect for all, law enforcement practitioners must internally nurture equality and inclusion in our organizations and externally demonstrate these values through community policing initiatives." I would like to thank the Middlesex County, that's a Massachusetts sheriff, Peter Kajolian, president of the major county sheriffs of America for selecting me to serve as chairman of the Professional Development and Diversity Committee. So congratulations to Anthony on that appointment and I hope he can share with us in his local community findings that come through his committee. So congratulations. Thank you.
That's it, Ms. Glenn? Are you finished with your comments?
I am.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, hello, everyone. You know, just a few quick things as the hours getting late. You know, first I just wanted to, you know, also reiterate with the mayor and councilwoman Glenn, both commented on regarding, you know, this, the moving nature and the appropriateness of our 9/11 event this past week. You know, it was, you know, thank you for comments from Press Square and to our fire, police and everybody who was there and who made it an event which, with all the difficulties and challenges that we had with COVID and putting it together, you know, that it was, it was an appropriate remembrance. And just, you know, glad that we were able to properly honor everyone from both Inglewood and anybody who was, you know, and all the victims of 9/11. So just very happy that we were able to have such an appropriate and moving service that day. Also, just want to very quickly just, you know, thank Franz and also thank Edroy Jenkins of DPW. You know, we've been, you know, actually and thank the police chief as well. You know, we worked on a couple of traffic safety issues, both one around the Mariah School, which we've been working on for quite some time, to put up signs in certain places which would help some of the safety issues which we identified and residents, some residents in the local area identified and just want to thank them for all their work in moving that forward and getting that accomplished and also for the beginnings of the efforts to make Broad Avenue safer. You know, it's, I know Franz has been hearing about this from me for quite some time and from the mayor for quite some time. And I know he's happy to have us, you know, thanking him instead of bugging him about it. But thank you very much, Franz, for all your help on that and to all who have been involved in that. And just want to wish everyone, you know, celebrates, you know, a happy holiday and a happy new year to, for the upcoming holidays. And thank you.
Mr. Hammer?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Just a couple of things. Just want to reiterate comments that were made by the mayor and councilwoman Glenn relative to the census and to voting. You know, those deadlines are quickly approaching the census unless the legal challenge stands up. Well, the deadline is September 30. And, you know, we also right behind it is the deadline for voter registration. But as was stated, the process has changed. Hopefully, it will be much more effective this year, all things considered. But, you know, there are three options. One is, you know, getting the ballot, once the ballots are received, which should be coming out at the end of this month, within the next week or so. But by October 5, ballots should be in hand. They can be dropped off at the ballot box that's located, that will be located at City Hall. And they could be mailed in. You know, suggest that you probably use the ballot drop box instead of mailing it. And the third way is to do a provisional vote at the polls on Election Day, November 3. The actual polling sites are really just for, you know, blind and disabled residents who need to take advantage of the ADA facilities. And if you have another option, you can bring your ballot on that last day and drop it off then as well at the poll site, or you can use the provisional ballot. But if at all possible, please get the ballot back and use the drop box to get your ballot into the system as quickly as possible. And the last comment is today begins the Hispanic Heritage Month and from September 15 to October 15, and a significant portion of our population here in Inglewood is Hispanic origin. And, you know, this is their month. So sorry to see the summer coming to an end. And I certainly don't like this show in the weather, but it is what it is and we'll deal with it. So stay healthy, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. And thank you for, once again, participating and attending in our council meeting. I'd just like to, I guess, repeat a few things that were said and just add on to it. Yes, I want to thank Catherine Melendez for organizing the 9/11 memorial tribute. I think that that's, we have to honor what happened there. I think that's very important that the city takes time out every year to honor that. And great job by all that participated. And with that, I'd like to thank Assemblyman Gordon Johnson and Councilman Hamer for advocating for a voting box for us. They went to bat with those folks over in Hackensack to get us a box because it's very important that we have one. So we will have a box where you could drop your ballot in to make sure that we get counted. The census, Catherine Melendez has been out and she's going to be out. She's given me a list of dates, times, and so rather than read each and every one out, I'll make sure that she posts it on the website. But she will be out and about and she'll get company by somebody from City Hall or a number of us while she's out trying to up the number. I know the number, the mayor mentioned a number 66 point something. I think in 2010, the number was 68%. That's what we got. We got to try to get a little higher. It's possible. It looks like there may be an extension again with that, but we'll have to see. So, I mean, I want to thank Catherine for the work she has done. Another thing that I'd like to bring to our attention is that the funding for the zone has been cut by the governor. And I think that we all have to be advocates. We have to contact our legislators and our board of education folks, especially put pressure on the superintendent on them to get, to put that back in the budget. That is a resource that our kids truly need and it has paid great dividends. So we need to really address this zone issue. You know, it seems like the last two years, they've always been fighting for some money. I know last year Gordon Johnson successfully got money for us. And I know that he's fighting for us again, but we need to call all these offices and have these people, you know, advocate for us down there in Trenton to get that money put back in the budget so that these kids could get what they need so they can be successful. So that's really important. And I'd just like to personally thank DPW. These gentlemen and ladies have been working above and beyond. I know it's a job and you have to do your job, but they have done that, you know. And I'm just going to speak to downtown Palisade Avenue. You know, it could be a timing issue where you see garbage out there, but they're out there every morning. And we are addressing that issue and we see where the gentlemen are cleaning and scrubbing the cans. And they've made an effort along with all the grass that they've cut, all the debris that they've had to pick up based on these storms that we've had. So I thank them for their efforts. And if they haven't gotten to something, I'm confident that they will get to it based on the way they are working. So I want to just thank them for that. And I want to thank Jim Friederko for, again, participating tonight and letting us know that he wants to be a resource, him and his team, to ensure that our citizens and our kids and our young people will be safe and healthy going through this school year and this year. That team of people who met at one point almost daily and then they went to three days a week, now we go to one day of the week, we had our finger on the pulse. I believe that the city has done a good job through the covert crisis so far. So, and people were on top of that. And we continue to be that and I believe we're prepared and hopefully we can keep everybody safe. So again, thank you. And just continue to participate in your city and your city will be what you want it to be. Thank you. Good night.
I have nothing more to report than what I've told you already.
Okay. Nancy, was there something that you wanted to say about the voting?
If you'd like me to, I was just going to.
Yeah, that's very important.
Okay. I didn't put anything together. Like I said, I was hoping to do it at the workshop, but yeah, definitely. So, yeah, I think Mr. Hamer discussed most of it. I just want to, just a couple of dates. October 13 is the deadline for voter registration. The city clerk's office will be open until 9:00 PM that evening. We do have a council meeting that night, but my, the staff in the office will be in City Hall to accept any last minute voter registration. We're getting a lot of requests from people. Yes, Mr. Cobb?
Can I add, since nobody has access to the building, how are they going to give them?
We're going to do like we did last time for the primary. We'll open the front doors and we'll have a table set up in the front with nobody allowed in, just us. We'll have hand sanitizers, gloves, masks, et cetera. But we'll have, they will have pens one time use that people can fill out and keep if they'd like. They can just drop off what they've already filled out. And the nice additional thing with this election is that there's also online voter registration. I believe the links are up on the website. If they're not, we'll make sure they're there. I believe they are on our Facebook page. So please take advantage of the online registration process. There's a lot of new technology with this election besides the online voter registration. You can also check to see if you are registered to vote. Go on the state website through the SVRS system. You can check that. You can also, once the ballots are received and you drop them off, you can track your ballots. That's very important. I know a lot of people want to ensure that their ballots were received and processed. So you can definitely keep track of your ballots this time around. So a lot of new technology, a lot of things going on. November 3 is Election Day. Polling places will be open like they normally are from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. There will only be eight polling locations throughout the city. They are consolidated, so you may only have two districts in one location. And to reiterate what Mr. Hamer said, there will be a voting machine at every location, but those machines are only for people who require ADA assistance, people who need actual assistance to vote in a machine, people who are blind, illiterate, or physically disabled. If you do show up at the poll, you do have the option of dropping off your ballot. There will be ballot boxes at every polling location on Election Day, or you can fill out a paper provisional ballot. So a lot you can do, a lot going on. Please give my office a call if anyone has any questions on anything. There's a lot more information that will be going out. Those polling locations will be also put out in the next week or so. I think that's pretty much it I have for now.
Okay. And we'll just keep reminding people.
Yeah, please just.
We'll just keep reminding. Can we post that? Can you post something on the website?
We've been posting things. The county has been doing a lot of press releases. I didn't want to have too much overlap of information. We will have our own statement, but for now we're just putting out there what the county has posted, including a video that they released today of how to fill out a ballot. So please take advantage of it. If you have any questions on it, watch the video, call us, you know, more than happy to assist anyone with anything they need.
Mr. Cobb, one last thing, and as important as voting, I'll be walking with Catherine Melendez tomorrow in parts of the Spanish and Colombian corridor of our city. If there's anybody that would like me to join them, obviously social distance and everything, in other parts of the city or to do work on the census, I think is critical. We literally have to roll up our sleeves and get out there at this point. And I want to thank you and Catherine for putting out, there was an ice cream event this past Sunday. I know there's going to be a series of other things to remind people. It's critical, literally, that you take care of yourself and your neighbors and each side of you, encouraging them to do this so that we can get the resource we need. Obviously, with the revenue, it's going to change and it's important that we get it from the federal government.
Okay. Now we're going to move to the public session. Anybody who wishes to speak, wave their hand, give their name, address, and they have two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Just a reminder, when your two minutes are up, I will raise my phone. And again, at the bottom of the screen, more button, click on raise hand. Start off with Rick.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me?
Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I'm really concerned about having these Zoom meetings. I'm really ready to get back to in-person meetings. This is really, you know, egregious and it's not really working for me. Pretty sure it's not really working for a lot of people. So that said, I want to talk about the transvaluation of values, where Nietzsche asserted that religion is the predominant moral system of the Western world that is hostile to life. I read an article that Wiles wrote in Jewish Link and he talked about learning from the past, okay. But I seen something else in your self-absorbed rant in the Jewish Link. You once told me that the Palestinians were themselves responsible for the actions of Zionists who have illegally occupied their land, that a fairy tale from the Schofield Bible, in conjunction with Theodore Herschel's racist ideology of white Jewish supremacy, allows them to write.
Do we have to listen to this?
Yeah, you do. It's a public comment.
No, 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 no. I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be.
Trying to get the fuck off this Zoom. What the fuck are you talking about?
No, 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 I'm sorry. This is too much. No, 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 I'm sorry. This is too much. This is too much. I'm sorry.
What are you talking about? I'm talking about his article. Can you please tell him to remain in order?
You know, Mr. Cobb.
Can I finish?
Councilman Cobb. I'm asking that you keep some decorum.
Okay, well Palestinians' lives matter. Palestinians' lives matter. This guy's on an article.
Councilman Cobb, I would appreciate that there not be allowed antisemitism on this Zoom.
Why don't you just shut the fuck up? I'm trying to fucking make a point.
Come on, come on, you ain't got to cuss at it like that.
What the fuck is he talking about? Right now Gaza is being bombed. You lack the moral compass to tell me what the fuck I can talk about. All right, can I fucking finish or no?
Go ahead, finish what your article said. Finish what you're saying.
Okay, so I'm talking about Michael Wiles and his disconcern for black lives and his continued pandering. Okay, while making excuses for what's going on in Israel. And I don't really care if Michael Cohen doesn't like it, but it's the truth. Not anybody is blind to.
I'm not okay with antisemitism. I'm sorry.
Michael, let him finish what he's saying.
Reason other than the theft of land. Okay, so you, Michael Cohen, and you, Michael Wiles, lack the moral compass to talk about black lives if you can't respect Palestinian lives and the theft of their land. And that's all I have to say. And I'll interrupt you when you're talking, or you're violating the city charter, living in Long Island. Nobody got time for your bullshit. All right?
And, you know, nobody has time for your antisemitism. I'm sorry. Nobody has time for your antisemitism. I'm sorry.
End of story. Okay.
Anti-Semitism. You're killing Palestinians as antisemitism. Fuck out of here.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Rick. Who else?
Scott Jenkins.
Scott? Yes, 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 yes. Hi. This comment is for Mr. Hamer concerning your comment about Black Lives Matter and putting a, some type, some type of mural or, you know, something on, on the ground or what have you. I, I'm sure you understand, Mr. Hamer, this is a very sensitive issue, and especially at this particular time. You have a history of kicking the can down the road. You've been doing it with the community center for the last twenty-plus years. You've been on all kinds of different commissions. You've paid people money, okay, to hold all kinds of town hall meetings, and yet nothing gets accomplished. Please don't use the children in the city of Inglewood to kick the can down the road saying we need the youth involved. They have enough stuff on their plate. They're trying to be educated right now. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask that you, you know, you really reconsider your position on it. That's the first comment. And the next comment is, I just want to wish all of our Jewish family and friends a very happy and prosperous and healthy holiday. Good evening.
Thank you. Yancy? Who's next?
Next is Sherlina Fields-Hopson.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to see everybody's well during this pandemic. I have since found out that the U-turns on Palisade Avenue are legal. I can tell you from experience, two incidents. I almost got hit head-on with somebody making a U-turn right there in the block between the monument and Armory Street. Mayor Wiles, you and I had a, just a brief, not even discussion when you said you bring this up. Now, since that little com, our comments, like I said, I found out that this was legal. It's getting real dangerous on Palisade Avenue with U-turns, double parking. I'm more concerned in there are double parking signs. If it's legal, if it's now legal in Inglewood to make a U-turn on Palisade Avenue, take the signs down. But it's dangerous, and with these new complexes going up, these new apartment buildings, townhouses, or condos, or whatever they are, more traffic. We got enough traffic on Palisade Avenue. Someone even suggested making Palisade Avenue a one-way. But my real concern is too many people are making U-turns to pull into parking spaces or make a U-turn period because people don't want to go around the block. Whenever this ordinance or this law was put into effect, there wasn't as much traffic on Palisade Avenue that it is now. But I almost got hit head-on with somebody. I have, nobody has any clue when someone was going to make a U-turn to pull in a parking space. Someone too, with the post I made just the other day and the responses I got, two of us witnessed somebody making a U-turn at Ingle Street and Palisade Avenue. Do you know how shocking that was? And the person that thought they were getting a parking space, it wasn't a parking space. But I think that rule needs to be reversed because it's going to get a little bit more dangerous when they, when these buildings are completed.
Does, does Franz know that? Is that, is a U-turn permitted on Palisade Avenue, Franz?
That is something that would probably be best answered by the police department. I, I don't know if a full-fledged U-turn is permitted, but a turn in the opposite lane, meaning if you're going eastbound and there's a parking spot on the westbound lane, yes, you can cross the double yellow and actually park in that space.
Have you signaled that?
I, again, that, that would be something that could be better answered by the police department.
Thank you.
Franz, maybe we can check with traffic, right? Because, because we got so much traffic down there now that, you know, she's right, you could.
I, I, listen, I, I think it's crazy, but unfortunately, that's the present law. That, that is, that is legal. And Sergeant Martin is well versed in that situation because he's been researching that law because he was also concerned about the amount of.
But I guess if, even if it's legal, could we say for safety reasons, we don't want that to happen?
I don't know if we can. I don't know if we can. Again, I will leave it to the police department to, to answer those questions. They have a better handle on it than I.
Do you know anything about that?
I do not.
Okay. All right. Yancy, who's the next person?
I just want to confirm everyone's only going to be allowed to speak once.
Yep.
So the next will be Mr. Minat.
Okay, good night again, everyone. Just want to touch on two things. I do agree with that U-turn. I've been, I've seen that a lot lately. It's been happening more, more than I've ever seen it happen. So that's a very, very intricate situation. I definitely agree. We definitely need to take a closer look at that for safety. Everyone's safety is definitely should be the most important thing. But again, I wanted to bring up the Black Lives Matter because I spoke to the mayor about that. We've been having these marches and these protests. And I definitely think we were actually one of the first towns to have a rally over a thousand people. I think we, we've been setting a good example around the community, actually in the state, making headlines for what we're doing. And I definitely agree, we should definitely have something to really show that unification in our city. And we got to really understand and make people know that, you know, Black Lives Matter, it's not about the organization. It's about the people, and it's about right and wrong. And we, and everyone's getting that a little bit misconstrued. And we got to make sure the point in Inglewood, New Jersey, understands and shows it to everyone else what that means and that we're all together and supporting everyone, all human beings, including black lives.
Right. Yep, agreed. That's why we put it on there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Not. Yancy?
Next is Janine Ellis.
Good evening, everyone. As I'm sitting and watching this council meeting and looking at expressions and hearing voices, I am really a little disheartened. I would like to hear and see more of us trying to talk with each other and work together. I understand it's not always going to be pretty, and there are going to be times that we're arguing or not agreeing with each other. But hopefully, we can, as a city, find some common ground and be able to come together to work for the good of our city. That's what I want to see happen. And I just feel like the display that I've seen tonight, we have a lot of work to do. So that's it. I know you all are working very hard. I commend you, but at the same time, we have to keep pushing forward and we have a lot of work to do in-house and outside. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Yancy?
Okay, next is Peter Jansen.
Good evening. I would, on the, on the question or subject of building height, I would like to ask for situations where you're building a, a, a structure on a sloped property, how is the building height arrived at? Because if, if you take a measurement from a high point on the property, you could have certain aspects of the building which are much higher than the building height that's regulated. So Franz, how, how are we doing the measurement these days?
It's actually an average, an average of all the four points of the building, I mean, the high points and the low points. So you tend to get an average and calculate the building height from there. Now, you know, you do have buildings that aren't square, that, that may have many points. So you take as many points as possible so you can get the best average as possible.
Okay, thank you. And there's the case of before the Board of Adjustment where they're proposing a street sign on Route Four, an LED, a large LED sign. And they're proposing it to be sixty-five feet in height, which seems very high to me. And I think it's the variance they're going for, only, only forty-five feet is allowed. So that's one thing to bear in mind. And I had a question in that meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the existing sign that's on the eastbound Route Four, which is LED. It's often blue. Everybody's seen it. I believe when that resolution came out, they had to shut the sign off at midnight, and I had asked them, and they were passing it on to the planning board attorney to see what the, what the actual statement was and if the operation of it was following what was specified. So I haven't gotten an answer yet, but I hope that that gets some attention too. Thank you.
Good timing. Okay, next is Diane Jensen.
Hi, Diane Jansen, five eighty-nine Richland Terrace. I just wanted to say thank you, Catherine, for what you mentioned, Ms. Glenn, about, especially about what Sheriff Kuratin had to say, and if we could all keep that in mind. I do understand, the second thing is, I do understand the need for R to get a better standard and poor's rating. However, I'm hoping that that in no way will impact the city's innovative ability to make sure Inglewood has a community center. That's it. Thank you.
Yancy?
The only one who has their hand up again is Rick. And you said the only one allowed once to speak. Anyone else would like to raise their hand?
You muted.
Mr. Minat, again, only allowed to speak once.
We're going to.
Sorry, everyone, you're only allowed to speak once. Those are the rules.
What was the public hearing, Council President? There's no new speakers.
Okay, so we're going to close the public hearing. And we're going to move to adjourn this meeting. A motion to adjourn in a second.
There's no close, right, Mr. Council President?
No close.
Move to adjourn.
So moved. Second, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good evening, everybody.
All right. Good night.
Take care, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.